In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Let us pray. Almighty and merciful God, you show your love to all creation. We come before you asking for a quick control of the coronavirus currently ravaging our nation and our world. Graciously hear the prayers we make for those affected by the virus. Grant healing to the sick, eternal life to the dead, and consolation to the bereaved families. We pray that an effective medicine to combat the sickness be speedily found. We pray for the relevant governments and health authorities that they take appropriate steps for the good of the people. Look upon us in your mercy and forgive our failings. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Amen. I'm finding new discoveries, new insights with each of these gatherings. And I'm grateful for all the people who have participated in your capacity with open ears and open hearts to receive all the information and knowledge that's being shared. And I'm grateful to the people who have spoken to us and shared it. In the last couple of weeks, two things in particular struck me. One was what our own Dr. Mary Olawen told us about DNA. You see that right there? And she said that, and I don't know why, it was such a, almost shock. But she said that our DNA with all of its nitrogenous bases, adenine, guanine, thymine, cytosine, that every human being has the exact same DNA that in race is a social construct. All human beings possess the same life force within them. Like I say, I don't know why that was such a shock, but it was a wonderful revelation and something for all of us to keep in mind all the time. And then Dr. Jenahans Piazza asked week in talking to us about the prophets and seeing the notion of separation through the eyes of the prophets. And her opening line, if you recall, she said, "You do know that there are no white people in the scriptures." And again, I don't know why that just hit me like a bullet right in the head. No white people in scripture. Wait a minute, I based my whole faith life on the Old and New Testament. You're telling me that my kind isn't even in there? And then I remembered something that happened two Christmases ago as Oscar, our maintenance and facility supervisor, was putting up our nativity scene on the hillside. You know, that nativity scene on wood was painted by a parishioner over 20 years ago. She did an excellent job on it. And you've seen it many, many times. It's been up on the hillside for 20 years. And then as he was putting, getting ready to put up, he said, "Oh yeah, your blond-haired, blue-eyed, white-skinned baby Jesus? That one you mean?" Oscar's from El Salvador. So I'm not so sure how our blond-haired, blue-eyed baby Jesus would speak to somebody from El Salvador or somebody from Africa or somebody from India. We tend to think that Jesus Christ is his first and last name, but it isn't. Jesus, Yeshua, means he was probably a short, dark-skinned, maybe a kind of a hook nose, first-century Palestinian. "The word became flesh and dwelt among us, but the us he dwelt among were people who were not white." And his last name, Christos, of course, means he's the Christ for all eternity, for all ages and for all time. And therefore, we can have a baby Jesus that's blond-haired, blue-eyed, and white-skinned, and a baby Jesus who is Japanese, or a baby Jesus who is African, or a baby Jesus who is South American. Tonight, we're going to continue our pursuit on looking at the racial injustice in our world and in our country and trying to understand, get a handle on those issues. And I've invited Rita Mitchell to be with us tonight. She's with us every Wednesday anyway, but I wanted us to hear from Rita. I've known Rita since, well, maybe almost at least 25 years ago or more. We worked together at St. Joseph's Parish in, I'm sorry, Corpus Christi Parish in Piedmont when I worked there before coming to St. Perpetua. She's been a friend of our community, worships with us, has given parish staff days for us in the past, and a wonderful presenter on many levels. So welcome, Rita, and thanks for being with us.
Okay, unmute. That's a good thing. Okay, thank you, Father John. Let me give you all a little background. From January through June this year, I participated in a faith-doing justice discernment series put on by the Jesuits West Province. We had conversations with many individuals to identify the concerns of people in the various Jesuit works in the Western United States. There were lots and lots of Zoom meetings. There were many issues identified: unhoused individuals, immigration, poverty, DACA, food deserts, health disparities, especially in this COVID time, and unequal distribution of wealth and other resources. Undergirding all of these issues is racial inequity. I'm now in the middle of a four-week course called Wrestling with Whiteness, also sponsored by Jesuits West. We're covering topics like whiteness, white privilege, implicit bias, and racial injustice, and having to confront our own issues of whiteness. At the end of church on Sunday, Father John usually says he's available for reconciliation, anointing of the sick, or just to talk. So I made an appointment to talk. We socially distanced, and I talked about issues I was struggling with and confessed my prejudices and thoughts and feelings that have come up for me during this time and thoughts and feelings about which I'm not very proud. Then he said he wants to continue the discussion about racial justice at the town hall meeting and told me that I could lead the discussion. So here I am. I grew up in Missouri, just outside of St. Louis, in a very white Catholic working-class neighborhood. Reflecting back, I realized that the first time I ever saw a black person was in high school. There were five black girls in my class of 250. We were in different homerooms, and so I never had any classes with them. And I'm embarrassed to say that I don't think I ever talked with any of them in the four years or made any attempt to get to know them.
You know, Rita, my experience was very similar. Our neighborhood, growing up in Toledo, was Polish, Catholic, and white for miles around. We were broken up, and like many cities in the East and Midwest, into ethnic divisions. I was in the Polish neighborhood. There was an Italian section. There was a German section. And then there was the black section, the poor section. And in my Catholic boys' school, I had 180 in my class. There were about 800 in the school. And I remember there were two African-American guys in my class. I think one of them was in band with me, and I'm embarrassed to say I don't remember his name. And like you, I didn't develop relationships with them.
So I invite everybody to take a few moments and think back about your first encounter with a black person and about your life experiences with people who are not like you. So when dealing with sensitive issues like race, it's good for everyone's voice to be heard. So my grand plan, and that I didn't plan carefully enough, was to do something different and have you break out into breakout groups of three or four people so that you could talk for a few minutes about your own experiences. Because that way, with a group of, I think there were 38 people last time I looked, it's hard for everybody to be able to talk. But since we can't break you into breakout groups, I would encourage anybody who would like to share their experiences of the first time they encountered a white or black person or your life experiences with people who aren't like you. So if anybody would like to do that, you can go ahead and just raise your hand or just unmute yourself and talk.
Well, I will, but the thing is, I will probably surprise you all. So do you want to let me, you want to hear from me?
As long as it's brief, Brian.
Okay, this is a picture of when I was in the United States Army. And if you can see it, we had black people in my platoon with white people. And no one could care less about what their skin color was. Okay, I was a lieutenant in the United States Army during the Vietnam War. Now, the thing is, here's a picture of three guys from Mississippi, Alabama, and if you can see it, one of the, they were basically, you couldn't understand when they talked because of their southern accent. And they had a right to hang out by themselves, okay? I was a New York kid, okay? Now, here's a picture, by total coincidence, of the two black guys, and they were hanging out. So the point is, that's the way it was. That's my, you want to know what my experiences, that was my experience in the United States Army.
And that's where a lot of people, especially men, encounter people of other cultures and other races and even poverty. I was speaking with two parishioners over the weekend, husband and wife. He grew up in Berkeley. His high school, unlike mine, was 40% Afro-American and 60% white. It was a Catholic high school in Berkeley. His wife grew up in Southern California. She knew a lot of Hispanics and knew absolutely no blacks. And it just, that's one of the things we're asking, like, we each have had different experiences, and none of us have had the same.
So, okay, well, let's move on then. So fast forward until we both got out of the army, and I was in the army too, Brian, and I had black friends in the army. My ex got a job with the Elementary Public Defender's Office. Most of the time, he would be working in Oakland, and we wanted to live in a diverse neighborhood. So we bought a home in Crocker Highlands, which is racially mixed. When it came time for our oldest to go to kindergarten, I checked the local Catholic school, Corpus Christi, and I think they had one Asian family at the time. The local public school, though, was about 50% white and 50% mostly black, but also Asian and Hispanic. My kids went to the public school that they could walk to and could form friendships with neighborhood kids. And our home was often filled with kids of many races and backgrounds.
That's good.
So my son's two best friends in elementary school were named Eric. One was black and one was Chinese. Ryan was playing with Eric Wong one day, and his mom called and asked if he could stay for dinner. She said, "They're having such a good time. Can he stay for dinner?" So when I picked him up, Ryan was so excited. He said, "Mom, they eat with chopsticks, and they have Chinese food every night." And I said, "They probably just call it food." It was a real learning experience for him, and he loved to go to Eric's house and always hoped that he'd be invited to stay for dinner. So that's a little about me and how I got here. What I'd like to do tonight is share some of the wisdom that I've gained in the recent past that's helped me confront my own whiteness and learn a bit about the difficult, tragic plight of black people in the United States who've been denied many of the opportunities that I have had. I'll focus mostly on black and white issues, although I realize that there is so much more richness in our world. In fact, my daughter-in-law was born and raised in Japan, and my six- and three-year-old grandkids are bilingual. They translate for us when Baba Chan, their grandmother from Japan, comes to visit. And I recognize their prejudices against Asians and Hispanics and the first people of our nation. That's the current buzzword for American Indians or indigenous people are the first people. And we could spend a whole evening discussing that, but tonight we're going to talk mostly about black and white issues. I also realize that there's a great diversity among all of us with respect to how much familiarity and interaction we've had with black people and how comfortable we are talking about race and dealing with feelings about race. Brian Massengale, a Jesuit priest and professor at Fordham University, says many white people don't know what to talk about with respect to race. They don't know how to talk about it, and they don't want to talk about it. So I thank you, Father John, for allowing us this opportunity to talk about race. St. Perpetua, her namesake, was from North Africa and was probably dark-skinned. I think she'd approve our conversation. Massengale said that he's often asked by teachers, pastors, and others, "How can we talk about race without making white people uncomfortable?" He says, "It's fascinating that the one group that's never allowed to become disturbed or discomforted about race is white people." Robin DiAngelo discusses this length in her book White Fragility. "The discomfort of white people glosses over the pain and discomfort experienced daily by black people." Whites often say or confuse safety and comfort and say that they don't feel safe when really they mean they don't feel comfortable. Massengale says, "There is no way to have an effective and honest conversation about racial injustice without making white people uncomfortable because the reason racism was created was to protect, defend, maintain, and legitimize white advantage and privilege." So if you're uncomfortable, that's okay. It's probably good. Discomfort is at the root of all growth and learning, and its presence often signals the need for deep self-reflection. And it's okay for us white folk to talk about race. We shouldn't have to rely on black folk to educate us and tell us about their pain. They've suffered enough already.
I had the chance to hear Father Brian Massengale, I believe, last year at St. Mary's when he gave a seminar. He has an excellent article that I want us to put a link to on our parish website in our resources. Because as an African-American priest, he's in a unique position to understand and then to be able to bridge the gap in the dialogue, especially when it comes to matters of the church and our relationship in the church between the white community and black community.
So to start the conversation, let's define a couple of terms to make sure we're all on the same page. Merriam-Webster defines racism as "a belief that race is the primary determinant of human traits and capacities, and that racial differences produce an inherent superiority of one particular race." John McWhorter, professor of Columbia University, said in an editorial in The Atlantic last month that Merriam-Webster is considering changing the definition. "It's because a 22-year-old recent law school graduate from Florissant, Missouri, where Michael Brown was murdered by a white cop several years ago. She wrote to the editor to tell him that the definition needs to be revised to include the systematic oppression of an entire group of people. The editor of Merriam-Webster wrote to thank her and tell her they're crafting a new definition, which should be finalized in a few months." You go, girl. One individual action can make a big difference. In an article in USA Today last month, Greg Harris, president of Race Forward, describes systemic racism this way. He says, "It's the complex interaction of culture, policy, and institutions that holds in place the outcomes we see in our lives. Systemic racism is naming the process of white supremacy. It creates disparities in many success indicators, including wealth and criminal justice, employment, housing, healthcare, politics, and education." Actually, the 10 o'clock hour of forum this morning on KQED had an interesting discussion of systemic racism. I don't know if any of you heard it, but it was pretty good. Father Brian Massengale describes white supremacy as "the belief that the country by its political institutions, cultural heritage, policies, and public spaces belong to white people in a way that they don't belong to others." And in an article that I was reading today for this course that I'm taking, it was saying that white Christians, basically Christians, are responsible for white supremacy in the United States. I haven't gotten very far into the article, but it was quite interesting. Several weeks ago, Dr. Mary Olawen told us that race is a social construct. We made it up. It doesn't have a basis in science. Our DNA is all the same. There is no evidence that the groups we commonly call race have distinct identifying genetic identities. So where did the term "whiteness" come from? Mary mentioned that the term "white people" was first used in the colony of Virginia to give certain rights to one group and to deny them to another group. Whiteness was created for social control and profit. John Powell, UC Berkeley professor of law and one of the great black thinkers of our times, says that the early definition of whiteness was a negative definition. Whites were defined as not being black. Concepts of whiteness have changed over time, shifting to accommodate the demands of social change. By the mid-19th century, the existence of more than one white race was commonly accepted. Many people in the United States were seen as white, and they could vote if they were adult white males, but were classified as either inferior or superior white races. Irish-Americans is an example. My mother's ancestors came to the United States to escape the potato famine in Ireland. And when they looked for a job, they found a sign like this. Can you see that? Oh.
No.
Okay.
And to your left.
Okay, "Help wanted. No Irish need apply." Sorry about that. So then fast forward to the 1940s. Anthropologists developed new classifications. There was white, Asian, and black were the only real races. There were no sub-races. All white people were considered the same. No Poles, or Germans, or Italians, or Eastern European Jews, just whites. In 1970, long after they had accepted the term "white," Italians, Irish, Poles, Greeks, Jews, and others proclaimed themselves as ethnic Americans in order to forge a positive identity at a time of black is beautiful. But this ethnic discovery didn't alter the fact that whiteness continued to be defined primarily by what it wasn't: blackness. Being white comes with white privilege, which is a social phenomenon. Peggy McIntosh, a feminist anti-racism activist scholar and senior research scientist at the Wellesley Center for Women, in a landmark article about white privilege, describes it as "an invisible package of unearned assets that white folk can count on because of the color of their skin." White privilege denotes both obvious and less obvious positive advantages that white people often don't recognize they have. These include cultural affirmations of one's worth, presumed greater social status, and the freedom to move, buy, work, play, and speak freely. White privilege also assumes, also implies, the right to assume the universality of one's own experiences, marking others as different while perceiving of oneself as normal. McIntosh thinks that whites are carefully taught not to recognize white privilege, as males are taught not to recognize male privilege. I was talking with my daughter, who's actually here tonight. Hi, Laura. I was talking with her over the weekend, and she told me of a conversation she had with her brother-in-law shortly after the election of 2016. She brought up the role that gender may have played a role in the elections and mentioned male privilege. My son-in-law looked at her in a disbelieving tone of voice, and I can just hear him saying, "Do you mean to tell me that I've been walking around my whole life with some sort of privileges just because I'm a male and I didn't know it?" The answer is yes.
Hey, 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 wait a minute.
So did you not know you had white privilege?
Well, I grew up with...
Or male privilege, I guess. You had both.
I grew up with three sisters and a domineering mother, so they had to swelch that male privilege earlier.
You still had male privilege. We could talk about that another time. So in Peggy McIntosh's article, and I can put a link on the website or I can put a PDF of it, she lists 50 examples of white privilege, which are pretty startling, actually. I mean, some of them, I thought, oh, wow, I didn't recognize I had that privilege. But some of them, I can go shopping, pretty well assured that I will not be followed or harassed. I can write checks, credit cards, or cash. And I can count on my skin color not to work against me. My friends Stan and Kathy are the parents of my son's black friend, Eric. Stan tells about when he went into Safeway and paid with a check, this is before debit cards, he would always be asked for his ID. His white wife Kathy went to the same Safeway, paid with the same checkbook, and she was never asked for her ID. Some of you may remember Stan and Kathy. They're the people who were here several times selling Assante products from a women's free trade cooperative in Africa. They usually came in late November, early December. Some more white privilege. I don't have to educate my children about systemic racism for their own personal safety and protection. I don't have to have the talk with my male sons or with my teenage men, teenage boys. I can do well in a challenging situation without being called a credit to my race. Father Massengale tells of when he was leading a retreat for nuns. He said, "We're supposed to call them women-religious now, but we used to call them nuns." And he said, "After the first talk on Friday night, one of the nuns came up to him and said, 'Father, you are so intelligent and so articulate. I'll bet you were taught by nuns.'" And he said, "Actually, I was taught by my mom and dad." And he said, "Sister, if I were white, would you have said that to me?" And he said she was very embarrassed and didn't talk to him for the whole rest of the weekend. "If a traffic cop pulls me over, I can be sure that I haven't been singled out because of my race." And you might even be able to get a tick, get a talk. You might even be able to talk yourself out of a ticket because you're white. Another one, I can choose blemish cover or bandages in a flesh color and have them more or less match my skin tone. I have a colleague who had to have a mastectomy, and she said that after surgery, they showed her prosthetic devices in skin tones. She said, "Those aren't my skin tones." And she actually worked with the company that makes the prosthetic devices to manufacture prosthetic devices in colors for dark-skinned people. It was another "you go, girl" moment. So individual actions can really make a difference. So we were going to go back into small groups again so that everybody's voice could be heard. So what we'll do again is just, I'll ask a couple of questions, and then you can, if you want to comment, then just unmute yourself. So here's what I invite you to think about. Have you recognized white privilege in your life? If so, when did you become aware of it? Describe some examples of how you... Describe some examples of how you have benefited from white privilege? Or is it a term that you still don't really understand or agree with? So comments? Carol?
Yeah. Okay, I was going to say, when I grew up in San Jose, and when I was young, it was quite common for us as young teenagers, like 12 to 15 kind of thing, to work in the field, as it were. We would pick prunes on our knees in the dirt clods and/or we would cut apricots in the orchards. And in all of those situations, they took the, those of us who were white teenagers and we were in one place while the Mexican immigrant folks were in another place. And I remember watching the people, especially when I was cutting apricots, and realizing how much better at it than I, they were. But also how they had their children and all of this kind of thing. And I knew they were living in migrant camps and I realized that I was really very privileged by comparison. And it was a good experience for me. I think it helped me develop some empathy. But I didn't have experience with blacks, you know, as they, there weren't any in San Jose at that time. There are plenty now, I'm sure, but--
But your white privilege worked for you with the Hispanic people?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, my parents didn't have to pick the trees and carry little kids around with them and all that stuff, anyway. Yeah.
Carol, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just have a memory of our family back in the 50s. So we're talking a while back, but we traveled around the United States for five weeks. And so this saw a broad spectrum, but from my whiteness in the place that I've lived, you know, even as a child, I was very shocked as I went through some of the towns, say like in Georgia or some other places, you know, the poverty level of the shacks and things like that. And first seeing those classic things of the N-word, you know, not allowed, and no drinking from this fountain, you must go on the backside of the house, you know, all of those kinds of things. And it's indelible, even at a young age, you knew desperately that something was very, very wrong, you know, in that way of living. And it's just stuck with me ever since.
Thanks, Carol. Tom, you need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. As a teenager, I visited with a family in Washington DC. And I went to get on the trolley with friends from my cousin's neighborhood. And when I went to sit down with them on the back of the trolley, I was explained that I was not allowed to sit on the back of the trolley because I was white. That was for black people only. So it was a real eye-opener for me.
Mary?
Thank you.
I've always been able to live in a house that's in a safe neighborhood, never needed more than one lock on the door. And I know being white makes that possible.
Wendy?
I think the college admission process in my day, still, I would say, even today, is very white-privileged.
Right. Lots of examples. Going into a store and being able to buy children's books or toys or dolls or whatever that depict children of different colors is sometimes pretty difficult.
Laura?
I'm Rita's daughter. My very best friend is black and probably about 10 years ago up in Seattle, a pretty progressive city, this is, you know, the 21st century, we went into a very popular makeup store and there were probably about 20 shades of white makeup that I could choose from. And I think there were about three browns and none of them matched her. And she asked the salesperson and they basically said, "Too bad." And it was very upsetting for her and it made me sick to my stomach. So I pretended I didn't want the makeup and we just, we had to leave.
Thank you, Laura.
You know, I hate to be the contrarian, but if, since I'm here, I might as well tell you my story. I've gone to--
It's short.
Okay, I've gone, John, I've gone to Protestant churches for the last 30 years. And I have now recently returned to a Catholic church. During the 30 years, I have been told Catholic guilt, Catholic guilt. People keep on, all the people, the Protestants tell me, "Oh, well, you're Catholics. All you do is deal with guilt." Okay? Guilt. Now, what I'm saying is, we can throw ourselves and lash ourselves to all of these things that we have been guilty of. Or we can, you know, do what Christ would do. Let's fix it today and go forward and not spend our time thrashing ourselves.
Okay.
That's all for now.
Thank you, but you cannot go forward if you don't even understand what the issues are or can't walk that mile in another person's moccasins. Mary Beth?
And I'll just say that white privilege is not about feeling guilty. It's not about lacerating ourselves. It's about acknowledging what the situation is so that we can then see what it is for other people who don't have those same privileges. Because they don't. Even though we say it's open to everyone, they don't. And it's not about being guilty about it. It's about seeing it so we can do something about it. My opinion.
Yep. Thank you, Mary Beth. That's a really good point. Yes, we need to acknowledge it, recognize it and acknowledge it.
And that is what's Father Massengale's opening, you know, point is that it makes us uncomfortable and that's okay.
Right.
We otherwise--
Right. And when we get uncomfortable, we can grow.
Mrs. Monahan?
Yeah, I think we're talking about individual transformation and how, you know, our hearts need to be changed. But I think, you know, I'm a political person. We got to do major political changes. And what, you know, I just heard on PBS today on the news hour that the basis is housing. If you don't have integrated housing, you're not going to get integrated schools and all the rest of it. And all the redlining that's happened in this area, we're not talking about the South, San Leandro and Oakland and everywhere, and especially in the suburbs. We could say, well, black people could buy a house in Lafayette or Maraga. Yeah, they could. But they would be such a minority and it's to our disadvantage that they're not here. So I really don't know how we are to raise our children in a segreg-- we have segregated housing and it's economically segregated. And how can, how can people, you know, unless we maybe, you know, like St. Columbo or some of these other parishes in Oakland, really try to have some group activities? This activity is great, but we're all white and I don't think, I agree with you. It's not guilt. It's putting a spark under people so they do something. I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, 100% Mary Beth. We have to do something. It's not, you know, crying on our pillows that we were bad, you know.
And this is an entree for us. We need to, as you're suggesting, mix it up a little. I would have called someone in the parish who's African-American to be with us. We don't have that. So at least let's, we're beginning a conversation that can, you know, move us to, you know, some other kind of action and some interaction with, you know, others.
Right. One of the things, oh, Marlene?
Marlene, you've got on--
Whoops. Unmute yourself.
You still haven't done it, Marlene. You have to click on that little microphone.
In the lower-left corner. Kristoff, can you unmute her?
Okay, well, we'll have to--
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. One of the things, moving on then. One of the things that's helped me in claiming my own whiteness and privilege is an exercise called Bridges and Barriers, in which we're called to identify policies and systems that have helped or hindered our family history. For many of us, these bridges and barriers happened several generations ago, remember? No Irish need apply. That was certainly a barrier for my family. Many programs have distinct advantages for white people. My parents were able to buy a home in the neighborhood they chose. But if they were black, they wouldn't have been able to. The Federal Housing Administration, part of the New Deal, would not insure loans for blacks in redlined communities. The FHA subsidized builders of entire subdivisions and required that no homes be sold to blacks and prohibited the resale of those homes to blacks. In the neighborhood where I live, the codes, covenants, and restrictions of the homeowners association were drafted in 1917. Blacks, Asians, and Jews were prevented from living here. Many of my current neighbors would have been banned. In fact, my neighbors on either side of me and directly across the street would not be allowed to live here. My white dad was able to get a loan to buy that home using the GI Bill. The GI Bill didn't specifically exclude black veterans from its benefits, but was structured in a way that ultimately shut the door for 1.2 million black veterans who had served their country in segregated ranks. That was back in World War II, Brian, by Vietnam, they served together. The bill adopted the regulations of the FHA, which prohibited integration. White Americans were able to prosper and accumulate home equity and wealth. The wide disparity in the bill's implementation ended up driving growing gaps in wealth, education, and civil rights between black and white Americans. Several generations ago, blacks and women were restricted from many professions. Access to those professions has increased slowly, but there are still few blacks and women in positions of power or influence. We had a black president, but we still don't have a woman president. And I'd love to say, or a woman priest, but I probably shouldn't say that here, so I won't. So we see that families are impacted by laws and policies and cultures that either provided bridges to help them thrive or presented barriers that made their lives harder. Bridges for some people are often barriers for others. So I invite you to think for a few moments about bridges and barriers that have formed in your family's history. And I expect there will be more bridges and barriers. And you can just say a little prayer, "Thanks for the bridges." And if you want, you can record some of them in the chat function. Or you could say them out loud here. I think we're, well, we're not, actually, no, we need to move on. But if there are bridges and barriers, just put them in the chat function. Okay?
Rita, with our time left, I don't want to miss the opportunity for you to talk about the program that you've been involved with for the last seven or eight years called Missy. I was able to be at an award ceremony about five years ago where you and another volunteer were recognized for your work with Missy. So why don't you tell us about that and--
Okay, so John told me he was going to ask me about this. So I prepared a few remarks so that I could be-- focused. So for seven years, through a program at Missy, which serves sexually exploited kids, I've been a mentor for a young woman who's a victim of the commercial sexual exploitation of children, or CSECK. She was sold for sex at a young age. My time with her has been one of the best but most challenging journeys of my life. There have been some unexpected joys and some really difficult times. When I met her, she was on probation in a group home in Sacramento. The condition of her probation was that she go to school, something that she didn't do too much when she was in Oakland. Yes, she's an Oakland girl, born and raised here. She's not from Cambodia or Thailand. The Bay Area is a hub for trafficked youth. So invite me back another time and I'll talk about that for a whole hour. But because she was on probation, she graduated from high school. It was something that she never thought she'd do. It wasn't expected of her that she would graduate from high school. When she was in Sacramento, we would often get something to eat and drive around for the rest of our allotted two hours together. One day, she said, "There's a lot about me that you don't know." I said that she could tell me as much or as little as she was comfortable. She started talking and I sobbed on the way home. Her life has been filled with chaos and violence, some things that I've learned over our time together. She and her sister were born when her single mom was 15 years old. She was a twin. And a year later, her mom's mom died of a drug overdose. My mentee was molested multiple times as a young child by people who were supposed to care for her. I met her when she was 17. Turning 18 was a big deal for her. She told me that by the time they were 18, many of her friends were either dead or in prison. In 2014, there were 84 people killed by gun violence in Oakland and she knew eight of them. She and her twin sister have been gunshot victims and she witnessed a murder in the parking lot of her mom's apartment. Now, I tell you this not to shock you or to sensationalize her life, but to give you a sense of some of the barriers she's had to face. There have not been too many bridges in her life. But there were fun times. One time, when my granddaughter was about a year and a half, I met with my mentee. We went to Nation's Giant Burger for lunch. I was on crutches at the time, so my mentee was carrying eyelid. She said to me, "People are staring. A young black woman is carrying an Asian baby walking with an old white woman." And I didn't appreciate the old part, but it was true. She told me that when she was in the life, she felt most valuable when she was turning a trick because she knew someone was paying her pimp to be with her. And that made her very special. Now she realizes how misguided that was, but it was pretty powerful for her at the time. I continue this wild ride because I love her. She tells me that I'm a calming, stabilizing force in her life. She can always count on me. We're both grateful for our time together and our relationship. We realize how different our lives are and have learned so much about each other's worldview. But it's often been very difficult and challenging. Occasionally, she'd go AWOL for a few weeks or not return calls or texts or not be available for scheduled meetings. I have to constantly remind herself not to impose my standards on her and that she doesn't benefit from the white privilege that I do. A difficult lesson that I've learned, that I continue to struggle with, is to accept her where she is, even if I don't think that's where she ought to be at the time. I've been counseled about that many times, that I'm her mentor, her supporter and cheerleader, not her savior or her rescuer or her therapist. So it's been an amazing journey. She texted me yesterday, actually, asking for the recipe for a salad that I make when she's at my home. And I just can't wait for the day when I can, we can be together again and I can make it for her here. So as Catholics, though, we need to confront some significant issues about race and face some painful truths, especially because we believe that God created all people equal. Jesus Christ didn't specifically address the black-white issue, but living where he did, I expect his skin was much darker than mine. And his gospel is surely one of loving and including everyone. We have some history that we need to acknowledge and repent for. Some statistics for the science in the group. There are approximately 51 million Catholics in the United States and about 6% or 3 million are black. Yet, black Catholics make up 13% of the total population. This, when I did this, the math the other day, this really surprised me. Only .0-- Only 0.07% of the priests, 0.03% of bishops, and 0.008% of women religious in the United States are black. And about 76% of black Catholics are in diverse parishes, and only 24% are in predominantly black parishes. Dr. Nicole Pratt, a sociologist of religion and a scholar in residence at the Aquinas Center in Philadelphia, is currently working on a book about systemic racism in the Catholic Church. In an article in America Magazine last September, she says, "Enough with the white supremacist structures that hold on to their power in the institutional church with tightly clenched fists while feigning disbelief that black Catholics exist." If Catholics were truly Catholic, Catholic with a big C, were truly Catholic with a little c, she says, "It would provide respite from the lingering tensions of urban life and an opportunity for diverse people to come together. It would be a place where blacks could find relief from racial segregation." With the small number of priests and religious sisters and brothers, black Catholics in the United States don't see themselves and their experiences reflected in positions of prominence the way white Catholics do. Exclusionary practices means that a strong tradition of African-Americans pursuing these vocations never developed. And blacks bear the brunt of parish and school closings, as we see now in our own dioceses. Pratt says that "At a time when economic equality is growing rapidly and the effects of racism are being felt more strongly than at perhaps any other time in the last 50 years, black Catholics, who need their church..." When black Catholics need their church the most, they're losing their resources. According to a report by the Public Religion Research Institute in 2016, 80% of black Christians believe that police killings were part of a much larger picture. So black Christians believe that it's part of a bigger picture. But almost 70% of white Christians believe the opposite, that the deaths are mainly isolated instances with no connection to one another. The report also indicated that white non-Christians are more likely to believe and see systemic racism as a problem than white Christians. So white non-Christians see racism as a problem, but white Christians don't. The Catholic Church, as a corporation, had significant slave holdings in America. Georgetown University is an example that comes to mind. In response to a New York Times article in 2017, "The Society of Jesus" decided to address the issue. In a ceremony, which included many descendants of slaves, the Jesuits formally apologized for its participation in the enslavement, ownership, and sale of 272 American Catholic men, women, and children, fracturing families.
You know, we were fortunate in the diocese of Oakland. Father J. Matthews was the first African-American ordained to the priesthood in Northern California. J. died a couple of years ago. He was the rector of the cathedral. A lot of us called him Mr. Oakland because he was very, very well-known, very connected to both the civic and social community. And he was a bridge for the church between the African-American community and the predominantly white Catholic Church. His funeral vigil and funeral ceremony was an amazing experience. There were several thousand people in the cathedral, both in the church itself and in the basement, watching on big screen. And at the end of it, when a New Orleans jazz band playing "When the Saints Go Marching In", leading the coffin out of the cathedral, as people passed around baskets of white handkerchiefs so that we could all spin them around. Our bishop looked just a slight bit uncomfortable, sitting in the bishop's seat, but the rest of us were having an amazing time. And we learned what it meant to celebrate a life well-lived and to really accompany somebody into God's kingdom. Father J. Matthews is still very much missed by the church and the diocese.
So.
Our time is coming to an end. I'm wondering if you might... You don't have a couple quotes for us?
Yeah, I'm ready to conclude here. So I'd like to conclude with some thoughts from Martin Luther King. Last week, I reread his letter from the Birmingham jail. He was imprisoned in 1963 for participating in a nonviolent demonstration against segregation. That blows me away, a nonviolent demonstration against segregation. And he ended up in jail. And he wrote this letter in response to a statement of concern and caution from eight white religious leaders in the South admonishing him for his actions. A couple of passages struck me. "I have reached, almost reached, the regrettable conclusion that the Negro's great stumbling block in his stride toward freedom is not the white citizens counselor or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate, who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative peace, which is the absence of tension, to a positive peace, which is the presence of justice, who constantly says, 'I agree with the goal you seek, but I cannot agree with the methods of your actions', who paternalistically believes he can set a timetable for another man's freedom, and who lives by the mythical concept of time, and who constantly advises the Negro to wait for a more convenient season. Lukewarm acceptance is much more bewildering than outright rejection.' Words and actions of the bad people. Words, he says, "We have to repent in this generation, not merely for the hateful words and actions of the bad people, but for the appalling silence of the good people." Seems like the passages could have been written yesterday instead of 57 years ago, but maybe substituting white supremacists for white citizens counselor, the Ku Klux Klaner. Many of us good people have been silent for too long. "The protests these days in the aftermath of the murder of George Floyd and others give me great hope. It seems that young people and white people are finally getting involved in numbers not seen in the recent past. Power listens to white people much more than to black people. Our time to act is now. The Spirit's calling us to move beyond our complacency and our comfort, to lean into that discomfort. Action is needed on the individual level. I can read more or examine my own beliefs and feelings, or on the institutional level, we can protest the closing of a Catholic school in our diocese, or write to the bishop, as Jenna suggested last week, or on the societal level, speak out at city council meetings or write to legislators to change the policies and systems that white people put in place to keep poor people poor." So for your homework, actually, I'd like to invite you to talk with someone this week about something that you learned, or maybe something that you knew but have seen in a different light because of which you've heard tonight, or maybe a feeling. So I let John have the last word, but I would invite you to stay for a moving 8-minute, 46-second litany of black saints, a remembrance of black lives lost that was created by my friend Sarah, a Verbum Day sister. She created this after the George Floyd murder. And as you watch it, imagine the police officer having his knee on Floyd's neck for that entire time.
Thanks, Rita.
Take it away, John.
This is not an easy thing for us to do and for us to examine and discuss, and yet it's critical that we do so. As I said, we are the community we are. We can't change who we are, but we certainly can expand who we are and look for ways to let a new wind blow. Next week, July 22nd, it's the Feast of St. Mary Magdalene. And for the last number of years, every July 22nd, we've had some different kind of celebration to commemorate Mary Magdalene. And this year, it gives us the opportunity to do it next Wednesday. So through art and through imagery and some scripture insight, we'll look at Mary Magdalene, who for too long was called and looked at as the repentant sinner instead of what she truly was, but considered by the early church, the apostle to the apostles, the one to whom the risen Lord appeared first and said, "Go tell my brothers to get moving because I'm risen." So next week, that will be the Feast of Mary Magdalene that will mark. Kristoff, announcement for Just Faith?
Yes, I think in light of what we've heard tonight and a few weeks back, when we spent two town hall meetings on the issue of racial justice, the Just Faith community of the St. Perpetual is actually launching a new program with the Just Faith on August 3rd and on the topic of racial inequity. Now, this is not for the faint-hearted, okay? Because we meet for eight weeks in a row, every Monday from 7:00 to 9:00 via Zoom. You will have homework to do, reading to do, videos to watch. And then we spend time together as a group on Monday evenings to discuss these topics. One of the books that we will be asked to read is, you know, you've heard of that, Right Fragility, you know, very powerful book. So if any of you feel called to join us, just send me an email, and I can set you up. We start on August 3rd, Monday night, for eight weeks. We have a retreat that we join with St. John of Arc on Sunday, July 26th, from 1:30 to 5:00. All this is via Zoom. So if this is up your alley, if you feel called to dive deeper and dig deeper and learn more about this challenging topic, just shoot me an email, and I will set you up, okay? And in regards to Mary Magdalene, St. Christ the King has an outdoor mass next Wednesday morning at 9:00. The perpetua that will go out tomorrow will have details in it, if you would like to join for that celebration.
Thanks, Kristoff. And Rita, thank you for being with us. Mary Beth?
I'll just say about Mary Magdalene. St. Mary Magdalene in Berkeley is having a special thing, too, on Saturday and Sunday. And Saturday morning, Alison Bender's and Lisa Fulham from the Jesuit School of Theology are giving a talk at, I think, 10:00. And then there's a workshop with relation to it, with regard to Mary Magdalene, so that would be good, too.
So thanks, Rita, very much for putting so much time and effort and also for the work that you do, especially with Missy and with the mentee, that young girl that you've become an inspiration and friend to. So Rita will put on the video, the litany of the saints, of the black saints. And that includes our own perpetua and felicity because they were from North Africa. And if you want to leave at any time during this, or if you need to, feel free to do that because when this ends, that will end our gathering.
Okay, here you go.
Can you enlarge the screen, Rita?
I did. Does it not enlarge?
It doesn't fill the whole screen.
It does on mine.
Well, press Go, then, the arrow. There we go. Now it is.
Okay.
Now, is there sound with it?
Yes. Is that better?
Not yet.
I can hear it.
When you share the screen, you have to click the audio. Before you share a screen, share computer audio. So you may well have to exit out of it and begin.
Where is that, Kristoff?
When you click Share Screen, on the bottom left is a little thing that you have to select, is Computer Audio.
Oh, geez.
You have to select that before you click Share Screen.
Okay, then I'm gonna stop.
So we click on Share Screen, and the bottom left, you have the.
Yeah. Share computer sound.
Yes, that one.
Okay. Okay. Okay, is that there? Okay, let me start over. Sorry about that. I didn't go ahead to share the audio.
We remember you. Lequan McDonald. We remember you. Philando Castile. We remember you. Michelle Shirley. We remember you. All you unnamed mothers and fathers. We remember you. All who have lost their lives. We remember you. Jamar Clark, Reddell Jones. We remember you. Kenny Watkins at Southport. We remember you. Twelve-year-old Tammy Rice. We remember you. Ericana Michael Brown. We remember you. Trayvon Martin. We remember you. All you unnamed sisters and brothers. We remember you. All who have lost their lives. We remember you. Lord have mercy on us. Save us, oh Lord. Free us from all evil. Save us, oh Lord. From every sin. Save us, oh Lord. From all temptations. Save us, oh Lord. From everlasting death. Save us, oh Lord. By your coming among us. Save us, oh Lord. By your death and your rising. Save us, oh Lord. By the gift of your Holy Spirit. Save us, oh Lord. Jesus, lamb of God. In your mercy, hear our prayer. Son of a living God. In your mercy, hear our prayer. Grant us peace, Lord. In your mercy, hear our prayer. Heal us, unite us. In your mercy, hear our prayer. Heal us, unite us. In your mercy, hear our prayer. Grant us peace, Lord. In your mercy, hear our prayer. Grant us your peace, Lord. In your mercy, hear our prayer.